Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, entire Open Family Meetings Act. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided, as specified in the Act. Our notice of this public meeting was provided in the notices of March 26, 2012. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices, mailed to The Nutley Sun, The Star Ledger, and North Jersey Herald News, and the Nutley Journal, mailed to the Nutley Township Clerk, advertised in The Nutley Sun on April 5, 2012, posted on the district website. This is an official meeting. Please stand for the pleasure.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the re-oddler for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hold the roll, please.
Mrs. Janice Moore?
Here.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Mrs. Sinskey?
Yes.
Dr. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Dusso?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sodder?
Yes.
Mrs. Kupka?
Yes.
Correspondents?
Here.
Superintendent Decker?
Here.
Superintendent Kupka?
Here.
May I have the motion for approval of minutes as distributed?
Make the motion.
Second.
Discussion. All's in favor?
Aye.
Close. Minutes are agreed. I can make one adjustment to the agenda. And Nutley Public Schools has a summer reading program. And it's our privilege and pleasure to congratulate the young lady who read the most number of pages this summer, and really amazed at the number of pages. Sixteen thousand, two hundred and fifty pages over the summer, which is amazing accomplishment. So we'd like Lucia Zuccio, of Macchia, to come forward, please. Congratulations. Well done.
Yes.
Now, we'll adhere to the rest of the agenda as it is, to make a motion.
Mrs. Schaller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sodder?
Yes.
Correspondents?
Here.
Superintendent Decker?
Thank you, Mr. Kupka. First piece of news for the entire community is that we will be sending out communications in all manner of media to make sure that everyone is aware, on November 2nd, it's
Whereas the Board of Education will be discussing matters exempt from public discussion pursuant
a Friday coming up, we will be participating in a full-scale drill. It's a mock drill, and I want to stress that it is a drill, coordinated by the Office
to NJSA 10:4-12, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education will assess the
of Emergency Management. The drill will take place at Washington School, and will involve the full emergency response of all manner of emergency medical professionals and all areas of the township commissions. OEM, the Office of Emergency Management manages these drills.
closed executive session at this time to discuss personnel.
We're supposed to be doing one a year.
Be it further resolved that results of discussion be public by inclusion on the agenda of a
And the idea is that we kind of ensure the preparedness and the coordination of all
subsequent meeting of the Board of Education or when the reasons for discussing such matters
the resources that might be necessary in the event of an emergency.
in closed session will exist.
Again, we will be blasting out the communication on the website, via Twitter, through School
So move.
Sorry.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Messenger, and email, using everything that's possible, for two reasons.
It'll be about twenty minutes if it will be back. This is resolution, should we go to open?
Number one, we want to, and those parents at Washington School and certainly the students will be made aware that this is taking place. All of our administration's been participating in this, and most will be present as observers.
Resolution, we go to open session.
Aye.
Our goal is to learn as much as possible through this so we can be fully prepared in
All's in favor?
Aye.
Hold the roll, please.
Mrs. Janice Moore?
the event of a true emergency.
Yes.
We want the community to, number one, know that this is a drill, that there is not an
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Mrs. Sinskey?
Yes.
emergency of this scale taking place at school.
Dr. Lee?
Yes.
But also, we've been encouraged by the Office of Emergency Management and the Police Department to encourage people to avoid the Washington School area of town during the afternoon from about 12:30 until 3:30, because they will be closing down streets and emergency vehicles and equipment will be used. So we want everyone to be aware that, number one, it is a drill, and if at all possible for their own convenience and safety, to avoid the area. Number two, I want to talk about speaking of security. We've locked down Nutley High School this afternoon. I know that we try to get as much communication as possible. School Messenger messages were sent out to parents of the high school, students at the high school. At this point, there's an ongoing police investigation, so I'm not really at liberty to divulge much information, but what I can say without any hesitation is that with the police involved, the building was deemed safe. Any cause for concern was removed. The building came out of lockdown before the instructional period was even over, and we were prepared to continue construction. All after-school activities continued. At the middle school, there was no need to shut the middle school down during the incident. Students and staff participated and reacted extremely well. And I want to thank Mr. Williams and his administration, as well as the police officers that responded for their swift action in making sure our students were safe. As more information becomes available, we're allowed to share our certain guilt. But at this point, that's all I can say on the matter. Switching gears, I was able to attend Camp Fairview last week with Spring Garden, Lincoln School administrators, teachers, and students, their sixth graders. I really do feel, and hopefully we'll have more time to talk about this, but outdoor education is an irreplaceable component of anyone's education and life experience. I think it's fantastic that the schools provide this. Most school districts I'm familiar with in New Jersey provide some kind of component at the fourth, fifth, or sixth grades to allow students these kinds of opportunities. It was exciting to get out there with the kids and watch them build their shovels, get dirty, get stung by spiders, talk about direction, and have some student, one student take out his cellphone and find accomplice on the cellphone. So there's a lot of learning going on, even for the facilitators, especially when the cellphone came out. But again, just to see them out there, parents as well, make the trip up to the day, I think it's a wonderful experience that we need to both continue and possibly expand. Talking about communication, we keep getting feedback on our website. It continues to be extremely positive, and we've gotten a lot of great suggestions that we're doing our best to incorporate. So please, for everyone involved, keep those coming. Teachers and administrators have, even though not required, started posting websites, get helpful information out there, and engage in two-way communication with our local community stakeholders. It's fantastic. We have more and more followers on Twitter. And I do bring it up again because, as an instance today, as we're trying to run a district as large as this, it becomes difficult to get information out to as many people as would like the information. What we've been able to do with Twitter is actually shoot out brief snippets to anyone who's interested to point you to where the information you want is. And we're going to pretty much hold fast this in the district. If you're looking for the information, either recommend it, if nothing else, sign up and just follow us at @NutleySuper. That way, you're aware, as things change on the website, we've already gotten some constructive criticism on the website, has so much information, it's difficult to find the information that they're looking for. We're trying to alleviate that by pointing people directly to things as they start to appear on the website. And Mrs. Davila is here, she has her own set of pages, the resources she's already started to provide, as far as guidance, they go beyond just the high school for sure. They're fantastic. As she tweets, I retweet, to try and make sure that if you're, if you want to be in the know, there's no reason you can't be, go right to your phone as unobtrusively as possible. Unfortunately, with all good things, there comes some challenges. Our website is currently down. There was an issue in Virginia that knocked out basically the foundation for a number of websites, including ours. What we have done with Mr. Vimeister, thanks very much, is he has redirected, if anyone goes to nutleyschools.org, he'll be redirected, you won't know that, but to our board pages, which are still up and live. And on that page, he has added some of the key resources, including email for staff. So if you're still looking at your email, just go to nutleyschools.org as you always did, but check the middle of the page, and you'll see a direct link to open up your email. We're hoping to have that up as soon as possible, and I'm looking over at Mr. Vimeister, see if he has a thumbs up or not. Last Thursday, Mrs. Russo and I attended the PT Council. We received some great feedback. Basically, it's good to see that everyone, again, excited about the website, somewhat geared about Twitter at this point. But we got, I saw you after that meeting, I got about fifteen new followers from that meeting, so hopefully it's catching on. Again, what we had to kind of reassure them is that this isn't going to be a Twitter feed on what hamburger I just had, or on my mind. But it really will be specific to our website, pointing people to the information that they want, including the links, trying to make it as easy as possible. They brought up some great information that we are already dealing with and addressing, and I'll be communicating with them directly. Mrs. Russo had a follow-up report, which I greatly appreciate. And it's nice to see that all the PTOs are working together, using the website, coordinating their events, playing together, and discussing things, I think, in a more consistent format. We seem very pleased with the production that we're doing. Budget calendar for the board. We progressed as the budget calendar has been drafted. Mrs. James, Mrs. Martin and I met, we handled central office aspects, and then last week, we began to use the building administrators. So we're now looking at the building level portion of the budget, and we are not done with right on schedule. It's October, and building the 2013-2014 budget. Real-time, progress reports went out successfully through the parent portal, on real-time, to all students except for case six. We give case six five paper one last time. We're looking to move everyone into the portal for the board cards. Again, trying to present, to provide professional development to our staffs on this as needed. So again, as we roll out what we're doing, we're trying to find the best ways to reach individual staff members or groups of staff members. Some, it just made perfect sense, and they didn't want their hands held. Others needed different kinds of support, and we're here for everyone. I know that depending on the function, I may need just a PDF, or I may need someone to sit with me and walk me through it. We're trying to provide all different manner, make sure that each staff member gets what he or she needs. I also have a conversation again today, a lot of conversation with the PT Council, and I have students at the high school who are coming up, they want access to the student portal. So, we have already been working on that. One of the things we will be releasing soon will be an opening, as we did with the parent portal, modified opening of the student portal, as we start working with our staff and our students to get people to understand that's where the information is. I know Mr. Capello is here, but again, just to highlight that we had our week of respect. It is October. We've been talking about harassment, intimidation, bullying. He's here with our specialists, and thank him for coming, to share with the district and the board what we've been doing, based not only on new law, but proactively supporting all of our students. Radcliffe School's security issue, we had an unfortunate accident involving a car in the building over the summer, and thankfully there were no students or anyone in the building at the time. We've gotten together, and Mr. Schaller will make a more detailed report, but just a couple of key points. We've been working with the county and the township commissions to find the most effective solution. Hopefully, concerns are raised by buildings exposing traffic. Currently, we do have initial plans from the town. We have one specific meeting of all the parties upcoming. And before moving forward, just wanted to put it, we will have a meeting at Radcliffe School to discuss the plan with the school community before we actually take an approach. AAA, just an update to the board, the academic administration, certainly as well as finance, we're running our aspiring administrators academy. Again, we had our first meeting, there was a great response from the teachers who were in it last year, that we're actually now running two different cohorts. We have a cohort of new teachers who want to start the program, and we're continuing our second year. We had both cohorts meet together, and then moving forward on alternating weeks, we'll be meeting with one or the other. I do want to highlight both our students and our athletic department. I know that both suffered a great loss recently, Carr accident, losing a student, and, I'm sorry, Bloomfield, I apologize. For both people, they're going to be surprised by that. Bloomfield, losing one student tragically and having two others injured. Students in Nutley came to our athletic director, saying that they wanted to help out. And in reaching out to the superintendent of Bloomfield, he let us know that the families of the two students that were injured are struggling with medical bills and the rest. And what happened from our students is that we waived the admission for our recent game against Bloomfield, and we do have donations to the families. We received a nice letter, which I'll forward to all the board members, I believe it was in Greek, from the superintendent thanking us for our support. Last piece is more of a state requirement, that October is state reporting month for us. We get, we have a huge amount of reports that we need to submit. And I do want to say, in many ways, some complicated, but also needed by the fact that we just transitioned to real-time. I want to thank Mr. Levine, Ms. Alasio, and certainly Mr. Vimeister. It's a big deal, especially when the central office staff decides that it is, to get these reports in enough time and accurately. It's critical because your state report cards, and everything must get managed on this all year long. And I'm just happy to report that currently, we are 100% up to date with our submissions.
Thank you, Mr. Kupka. Mrs. Janice Moore?
I'd just like to report that our fixed asset and technology update has been completed. The final report was submitted to my office today, and tomorrow morning will be forwarded to our auditors so that they can complete the annual financial report. We've also begun the open enrollment for all benefits, and that period will be extended through November 19th for all staff to make changes to any of their medical plans, as well as the FSA plans that we've discussed.
You now have a presentation on HIV, Monsieur Capello?
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon. Good evening, everyone. Proud to discussing the cases, statistics which are required from the state of New Jersey. I'd just like to give us, give everyone just a brief overview of things that we're doing, what we did last year, as well as things that we did this year, and things that we're planning on doing for the upcoming, for the school year. But just, as a reminder, just a quick refresher, just that we have a working definition when we're talking about harassment, intimidation, bullying. We know that it's a gesture, anything written, verbal, or physical act, or any electronic communication, whether it be a single incident or a pattern, that is reasonably perceived as being motivated by any characteristic. In a minute or so, I'll show you what those characteristics are, that there are protected characteristics which are defined by the state. There are defined characteristics, but also there are other distinguishing characteristics. We know that HIB could occur on school property, any school-sponsored function, at a dance, at a football game, on school property, a bus, off school grounds. But when it is off school grounds, it has to substantially disrupt or interfere with the orderly operation of the school, or the rights of pupils, has to affect the student emotion physically, or physically, or put them in fear. Has to have the effect of insulting or demeaning, creates a hostile educational environment. Here are the protected characteristics. However, we know that bullying doesn't just happen based upon these characteristics. It could be for any reason. There may be no reason. Just that maybe a young lady started dating a boy, and the other girl, the ex-girlfriend is upset, and now we have a bullying incident occurring. But it doesn't have to be based upon these protective characteristics. For this year, as you know, I'm the anti-bullying coordinator. We also have anti-bullying specialists at each school, and all the anti-bullying specialists is to chair the school safety team, as well as lead investigations of reported HIB incidents. Reported HIB incidents. The school safety team, which basically their main focus is to identify any patterns in the school system and work on prevention. What can we do to prevent it? What can we do to make our school, our community, our school, our district, a better environment? A safer environment? The school safety team is comprised of a specialist which leads the team, the building administrator, a teacher, teacher or teachers, as well as a parent. We know that this is not just a school thing, but this is a community thing, and we need to get the input of our community, our parents. Our specialists, we have Mrs. Tenell, she's the specialist at Lincoln School. Mrs. Seneglia is at Spring Garden in Washington. And Ms. Alfaro, she's at Radcliffe and Yantacall. Our anti-bullying specialist right now is Mrs. Joyce Wood. However, Mrs. Janice, who's on maternity leave, should be returning on November 1st, so she will be back as the anti-bullying specialist. And Mrs. Facilli is at the high school. All their contact information is on our district website, hopefully that'll be up shortly. Mr. Janice Moore? In preparing for this year, Department of Education has training set up. I already been through a training that was sponsored by the DOA. Some of our specialists are going back to another training. And our goal is to work together to come up with ideas, once again, that we communicate with the specialists and I, and they go down and bring it to the school, the school safety team. Great news, the district has hired two elementary guidance counselors, once again, for our specialists, Ms. Alfaro and Ms. Seneglia, who will be implementing character education lessons at each grade level throughout the school year. This summer, we're involved in reviewing our policy and procedures, and determining what are some patterns of HIB in our district. We also worked on creating weaker respect, which I will speak about that shortly, as well as what other things we'll be doing throughout the course of the school year. In addition to our, what we discussed just now, last year, there were, in addition to Articulation Day, where everyone in the district was trained, following September's Articulation Day, I met with staff district-wide, at all different levels, at all different positions, and there were seven other trainings that were conducted. This year, we'll be doing the same thing, reaching out to all new staff and conducting a training, so we're all, we're all trained on what to do if there's an incident of harassment, intimidation, or bullying. Once again, I'll be talking about weaker respect, what we did. Once again, our goal is not just to find out what we're doing at each school, but it's at an individual level. What are the anti-bullying specialists? As guidance counselors, as student assistance counselors, what are we doing to prevent HIB, or to address? What are we doing at the classroom level, lessons? What are, how are our teachers helping out? These are all things that we are doing right now as a school district. But I didn't just in the classroom, but what are we doing as a school? And that was just highlighted recently for weaker respect. I also meet with the anti-bullying specialists on a regular basis, to make sure that we're all on the same page and working together. We also have a link, a HIB link, on the district website as well. Once again, I spoke about our student assistance coordinators, our elementary counselors who serve as anti-bullying specialists. For internet safety, at the elementary level, teachers are infusing internet safety into their curriculum. We also, the media specialists are discussing internet safety with students as well. At the middle school, we have an internet safety course. At the high school, we have a cyber safety club. We have assemblies that are going on throughout the year. We have peer-to-peer activities, and this was, this was great. I have a club called Stan, Students Taking New Direction. One of our goals last year was to get down to the elementary school. And one of the things that we did, we did a program for third graders on bullying, and we made a Jeopardy game out of it. At the high school level, we had students, around this time of the year, they created a PSA called Tom's Story. And after we showed the video, I contacted Mrs. Facilli, I said, "Mrs. Facilli, you have to get down to the elementary level, to the middle, to the middle school." And the students that helped put that PSA together, as well as other students, they helped out, and they were in each class, facilitating, they viewed the video, and they were facilitating discussion about Tom's Story. We also have a cyber safety club at the high school, where they go down to the elementary school, and they do programs for elementary students on cyber safety. We also have various clubs from, I guess kindergarten to 12, that are doing programs on harassment, intimidation, bullying prevention. Not only doing, we're doing it at the individual level, classroom level, school level, but we're doing it at the community level. Last year, I met with the Nutley Clergy Association to talk to them about what is HIB, and what is the state doing. And they were able to go to their parishioners and educate them as well. Worked closely last year, and will continue to do it this year, with the Department of Public Affairs, the Department of Public Safety. We already had Detective Padilla come in last week to do some stuff for school violence last week, with seventh and eighth graders. We have the Nutley Municipal Alliance, which focuses primarily on drug and alcohol prevention, but when we also talk about weaker respect, it's not just a weaker, it's not just about respecting others, it's also about respecting ourselves and what we're putting into our body. The Hope Committee, helping our parents endure. Last year, we did a public influence campaign, and how can you be influenced by others? And how are you influencing others? And that all falls under the umbrella of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. We also have the CHAMP Committee, with Stanford Community Health and Ventilum Programming. This past Friday, the counselors and I met with 24 high school students who will be acting as big brothers and sisters, they're students in the Nutley School District. And that program has been, it's been implemented for the last four years, we've had that program. We work with the Nutley Family Service Bureau, doing social skills groups in certain classrooms. We've worked, we, last year, we received $4,500 from the Nutley Parent Amnesty Network to implement the New Jersey Child Assault Prevention Program. Now, I think this is a wonderful program, because this program does three things. They focus on three things for grades one to three. First thing is bullying, student-to-student bullying. Then it also talks about stranger danger, as well as child to adult-to-child assault. If we're aware of what's going on in Bergen County, which unfortunately could happen anywhere, but highlighting Bergen County, there have been a lot of cases right now with child, give me the word?
Attempted.
Attempted abduction. So this program will help our students, grades one to three. It's a great program. Right now, we're working on setting up a workshop for the teachers. To implement this program, the teachers have to be trained, as well as the principals have to be trained, on what they'll be, what are the representatives from NJCAP will be doing. So that's one of our goals right now. Last year, we've had a wonderful relationship with Guardian State Equality, and we utilize them as a reference, as a resource, to help us dealing with certain different types of HIB cases. We can respect, this passed a few weeks ago, from K to 12, at the elementary level, announcements, morning announcements, from grades K to three, we used, we utilized the book, Hey Little Anne, which discussed respect, empathy, and how one's actions impact the feelings of others. So they had discussions on respect. But in addition to that, we also took it to another level, where students had to bring home, had to bring work home, and had to have discussions with their parents on respect. Grades four to six, this year, we have a campaign year, and grades four to six, they focused on creating campaign posters about respect. And once again, they had to go home and do some work with their parents about respect. The middle school, morning announcements, we played the song of respect, frankly, I'm not sure how many students understood what the meaning was, but we played it every day, every morning. We also had a lesson through our social studies classes, One School, One Goal, Be Bully Free, where students were given a number one, and they had to write in there what's one thing that they could do to make our school a safer place. If you walk into the main lobby, you'll see a huge banner that the students created. Unfortunately, the banner's so big that we actually ran out of space, so we're going to try to make some adjustments. Ready to see again? But we also had the media specialists at all the schools, were trying, were highlighting books on respect and character education. Mrs. Facilli worked with the K Street Alliance, leaving the high school in Rachel's challenge, which is basically a challenge which was developed after the Columbine shooting in honor of Rachel Scott, who was the first person killed in the Columbine shooting. And basically is, what it was, that if a student sees someone doing something respectful or something kind, they would give them a piece of paper, that student, the kind act, would go down to a designated area, give the teacher the paper, and that paper served as a link. And what they did, they made a paper chain throughout the school. And they also infused anti-bullying and respect lessons into the curriculum. Onto our biannual report, and the biannual report, as you can see, is from January to So we have a total of 120 cases that were reported, not 120 confirmed HIB cases. I need to make sure that everyone understands that, there was 120 cases that were reported and investigated. And this was the breakdown according to each, to each school. Breaking it down by elementary level, as you can see, we had a total of 12 HIB incidents at the elementary level from January through June. Confirmed HIB is to the right, where cases that were investigated were to the left. As I spoke earlier about protected characteristics, one thing that's really important for you to be aware, you can see that there were 12 cases that were confirmed to be HIB. However, if you look under the protected characteristics, they're more, they may be more than 12. Okay? Just because it's one case of a HIB incident doesn't mean that it was only one factor that was addressed. Someone could bully someone based upon different factors. That student, the kind act, would go down to a designated area, give the teacher the paper, and that paper served as a link. And what they did, they made a paper chain throughout the school. And they also infused anti-bullying and respect lessons into the curriculum. Onto our biannual report, and the biannual report, as you can see, is from January to So we have a total of 120 cases that were reported, not 120 confirmed HIB cases. I need to make sure that everyone understands that. There was 120 cases that were reported and investigated, and this was the breakdown according to each school. Breaking it down by elementary level, as you can see, we had a total of 12 HIB incidents at the elementary level from January through June. Confirmed HIBs to the right, where cases that were investigated were to the left. As I spoke earlier about the protected characteristics, one thing that's really important for you to be aware, you can see that there were 12 cases that were confirmed to be HIB. However, if you look under the protected characteristics, they may be more than 12. Just because it's one case of a HIB incident doesn't mean that it was only one factor that was addressed. Someone could bully someone based upon different factors. So you may see, you're probably, I believe it was 14 or 15. Secondary level, the high school, 37 cases reported, 14 cases were confirmed HIB, and 15 investigated at the Minston Middle School, and seven cases were confirmed HIB. Out of the 21, here is a breakdown of the factors. And you can see with the asterisk, six confirmed cases were not motivated by protected characteristics. As I spoke earlier, not every single case of HIB is based upon the protective characteristics.
Can you give us an example of what that can be?
Like I said, girl is dating someone, and the ex-girlfriend's upset, and here we go. Or someone's pushing someone into the locker every day for no reason.
What do we do, Joe? I'm trying to think, since we're in, out of the seven that we have in the middle school, how do we deal with those seven? Not names, obviously, but what's the process for the seven people that were confirmed HIB?
Yeah, once again, I'm just going to give you some suggested ideas. Of course, we're always contacting parents. If, it's not suggested that there's some type of conflict resolution, because it's not a conflict, but it's based upon the students that are involved, if we think that maybe it's a good idea to get them together, maybe we will. Sometimes we don't. Sometimes we've done, we've had students write essays, apology letters. We've had students create posters, of course, with their names, the alleged, the person who, or false. Yeah. We're not saying, okay, this person did the poster, we're writing their name on the back. Everything's confidential. So it can be many different things. Sometimes there's discipline. Sometimes they have to follow up with makeup. There's a range of stuff that we've implemented, and that's from kindergarten to, I don't think kindergarten is an incidence within kindergarten, but there are so many different things that we have done. I don't want to wrangle around. Speaking regarding the Department of Ed, we are still waiting for a grade from the state. We have not received the grade. Basically, each school will receive a grade, and then as a district, we will receive a grade. In July, from June-July, we put together a report which will determine our grade. There will be a link to my report from our district website, so you can see what the report entailed. However, at the Department of Ed, when I went to that training, many of the anti-bullying coordinators were not really happy that the way that you have to report to the state is that, how could you really describe what you're doing in a text box that's only allowed to have 50 or 60 characters? So it was really difficult. So we're looking forward to that grade. Our district was reimbursed $1,400 by the DOA. If you remember, when I did this presentation in January, the township of Alamoche filed a complaint stating that this was an unfunded mandate and was unconstitutional. Well, the state of New Jersey came up with a million dollars, and that's how much we received, a million dollars. So, and, thank you.
Thank you for an informative presentation, not only on the statistics, but also the whole program. So, thank you. Committee reports.
Mr. President, thank you. It's been a busy time for our administration committee, as you can see by the notes. We spent quite a bit of time recently discussing the architect recommendations, again, which you see on the agenda. We spent a good part of our evening with Mr. Alfaro discussing the athletic program. And I must tell you, and I want to thank Brenda Sherman and Fred Spillar for their input at the committee meeting. I was overall impressed with Mr. Alfaro's presentation of where he stands as a department head with technology. And I say this as a respect to Mr. Alfaro. Sometimes when you visit a department, you might not put them in the same category as English and psychology or whatever. His presentation on the way his group is moving forward with the technology, the way his coaches are moving forward with the iPads, the way he's infused that in his ed program, I was extremely impressed, and I, other board members can chime in if they'd like, but it was a good presentation. He seemed to be well ahead of the curve, and I was happy to see that. We spent quite a bit of time talking also about the LightPath and our shared services with the community. As you know, we're meeting with Mr. Evans and the other commissioners moving forward with LightPath, and he and I talked about maybe moving forward until they do get their on board, okay? We talked about some personnel issues. We discussed the budget. We spent some time on the wireless technology, the swipe access, brought up to date on the buildings and grounds. Then we spent some time talking about our policies, and again, you'll see some of our policies out for review tonight. It was a very informative, long, and productive administration meeting.
Thank you. Finance committee.
I'm sorry. I want to give the report on Radcliffe School Committee. Mr. Kaczynski, myself, and Brenda were on the administrative committee, had several meetings, a relationship to Radcliffe School, to discussing the vehicles and the cars that we got through the front, and of course, with the superintendent. The superintendent authorized us to authorize himself to make some calls. We coordinated some meetings between the county executive's office, the three commissioners that this crosses over on, Mayor Matronka's office, Commissioner Scarpelli's office, and Commissioner Evans' office, who have a different part of traffic safety or things that go on there. We had a meeting with the county engineer, the county executive chief of staff at the school at the front. It was decided that there be a shared program between the county and the township, that's township property, not the school board's property, but we're involved because of our school, of course, that's why we're out there. And they're going to consider it a shared service. We've seen a draft of a plan tonight from the township engineer, Commissioner Scarpelli's department. We'll be meeting with the other board members on that, and members of the Radcliffe School community. And then we'll be taken to the county. The county is going to work out assisting us with obtaining the ballots, offsetting some of the cost of the town, and doing the work with the township as a shared program. So I wanted to state that, you know, in these times, when you talk about shared services, finding funding, what it has to do with our children, everybody has come together on this program to make sure that in your future, we're going to have a solution that's safe and protecting Radcliffe School and our students. So I just want to give a report on it because it's gone so well. Assistance this school board has received, and the superintendent can help coordinate this with us, that the committee should know there is an ongoing project. It will be done, and it's a great shared service.
Thank you. Finance committee, also, last week, and the topics were, we talked about the 2012-13 fiscal year, and the business administrators working on final adjustments to the budget, fine-tuning the transfers, and next month will be presented as, once the staff is fully in place, those main adjustments that will be made. We talked about the resolutions in tonight's agenda, including the transfers, the annual maintenance plan, and the contract payment for Radcliffe, generally. With respect to the annual maintenance plan that's been distributed, one of the charts in there is a 10-year history of how much has been spent on maintenance, and you'll notice that for the proposed for 2013-14 school year, an increase in that amount. And the purpose of that is to get some things done that are not covered by the referendum that need to be done, such as the swipe cards in the middle school, or some of the repaving sidewalks where there's hazards there. So we're doing, the proposal is to increase that. With respect to the professional appointments and contract mules, it's proposed that an annual report would be given to the full board each January on professional services, how long they've been in place, the dollars being spent, and if there are any issues with any of our professionals, and then a schedule will come at that point to which of our P's will go out in that particular year, while setting out every one every year. Also, we formed a subcommittee for insurance brokerage, which will begin in November, making a recommendation for January for the brokerage. Benecar renewal, the IMAC has negotiated with a current carrier, and they agreed to a 10% decrease. They're recommending that we accept a 10% decrease, a little going out for marketing, which would have other complications if we change it. The total cost of the Benecar is less than $100,000, approximately $1,000, so a 10% decrease would be in our favor. We also talked about LightPath renewal, and as a committee, we agree that we have to go forward with something, since our contract has inspired with them, but also we continue to work with the town for the fiber throughout, fiber throughout the town. But because of the lead time for that, it's very important that we go forward with a contract with LightPath, because we go from month to month that would cost the district a lot of dollars. Biggest concern is what is the cancellation provisions in that contract, so that we do get it with the town, a shared service, that we can handle in that contract. On refinancing updates, conditions are still not favorable if we go forward. They're looking at alternatives or investment councils. But the literature and facility use, it's something I bring up with their old business, want to discuss with the full board, they want to use the media set on Sundays, and there's some issues around that we'd like to discuss with them, so we do that with our old business. Finally, Mr. Lazwick, who have, Mr. Lazwick touched on the budget development for 2013 and 14. And then finally, for the extended day, the committee is recommending that a 25% reduction for our staff members for the first child to be implemented. Again, something we can discuss. Finance committee. The other committee reports. I'll close that portion. Hearing of the citizens, resolution items. We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Board regulations allot 20 minutes for these communications. Each portion is limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this recording. Speakers may speak more than once, only after all those wishing to speak have adopted the topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as chairperson, and no one may address the board members individually. Please be reminded that your statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please always remember to state your name and address each and every time you address the board. First person wishing to speak, please step forward. Saying no, and I'll close this portion. Dr. Reed, we move academic resolutions. Would you move that?
Yes, Mr. President, I make a motion to move academic resolutions one through seven.
Sorry. Discussion. Call roll, please.
This is Dan Chen Morton. Yes, Mrs. Flynn. Yes, Mr. Kaczynski.
Yes.
Dr. Reed.
Yes.
Mrs. Russo.
Yes.
Mrs. Spillar.
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman.
Yes.
Mrs. Sazado.
Yes.
Mr. Puckett.
Yes. Mr. Kaczynski, we move administrative resolutions one through seven.
Yes, Mr. President, I move administration resolutions one through seven, as so prepared.
Second.
Discussion. I'd like to note that Mr. Kaczynski mentioned that the architect, that it's an architect record, which means we're not going out for any specific work on this. If we're required to have an architect record in case there's an emergency, then you have something to call on, such as when the ceilings came in several years ago, so it's not that we're going out, in case the public is concerned. Any other discussion? Call roll, please.
This is Dan Chen Morton.
Yes.
Mrs. Flynn.
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski.
Yes.
Dr. Reed.
Yes.
Mrs. Russo.
Yes.
Mrs. Spillar.
Yes, on all, I'm going to stand on five, and yes, on the.
Mrs. Sherman.
Yes.
Mrs. Sazado.
Yes.
Mr. Puckett.
Yes. Mr. Sazado, we move finance resolutions one through eleven.
Yes, Mr. President. We move finance resolutions one through eleven as written.
Second.
Discussion. Call roll, please.
This is Dan Chen Morton.
Yes.
Mrs. Flynn.
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski.
Yes.
Dr. Reed.
Yes.
Mrs. Russo.
Yes.
Mrs. Spillar.
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman.
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski, we move personnel resolution number one.
Yes, Mr. President, I move personnel resolution number one, as so prepared.
Second.
Discussion. Call roll.
This is Dan Chen Morton.
Yes.
Mrs. Flynn.
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski.
Yes.
Dr. Reed.
Yes.
Mrs. Russo.
Yes.
Mrs. Spillar.
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman.
Yes.
Mrs. Sazado.
Yes.
Mrs. Puckett.
Yes. Hearing of the assistants. In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Board regulations allot 30 minutes for these communications. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this recording. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me as chairperson, and no one may address the board members individually. Please be reminded that your statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, and your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board. First person wishing to speak, please step forward.
Terry Clark, 45th and Place, spokesperson for the parent advocacy network. Mr. President, I'm here today to speak on behalf of parents who are upset about the elementary art program. And I just wanted to point out some things about Tuesday. I'm aware of the fact, and we are aware of the fact, that there is a rotating schedule with other programs involved. The parents are not really upset about the rotating schedule, they're just upset about art being in the rotating schedule. That seems to be an area of concern, because the four art teachers that are in the schedule are now coming to the children in a six-week period, and the children, and the parents feel that it's not, the continuity of the program is being lost at this point. They really don't understand how assessment can be made, how children are going from one art teacher to another, because art teachers are people, and, you know, like any other teacher, they run their, they run their own way, and they might have their own rules, and they might have their own curriculum. So it's becoming very sporadic in terms of how the children are really learning the art. And certain schools like Radcliffe hasn't, they haven't even started their art program. They've had another program that they started. Parents are really upset with this because they really feel that trying to get these children, especially the young kids, the first and second and third graders, to get used to a new art teacher every single time is difficult. Also, in our specialized classes, we have autistic children who, they have a difficult time to get used to the people that they know, now they have to get, you know, get used to all new staff. And it's such a time where people come in, they need, they work with them, and then they're gone. So it's that sense of like, it doesn't have a sense of feeling of rapport that they need to have. And like I said, there's also a concern in regards to how the sixth-grade art program is being run, because in the way it's always been run, when the teachers were in the buildings, the sixth-grade teacher was responsible for really getting, the sixth-grade art teacher was really responsible in getting that child's portfolio ready, to see whether or not they would be able to go on to Mrs. Hill's class upstairs. I can speak for my son, because he's a junior now across the street, but when he was in seventh grade, he was in Mrs. Hill's class, and he did develop a portfolio. And I have to tell you that he was in Mrs. Hill's class, not so much because of Mrs. Hill, who's a great teacher, but it was really because of Mrs. Coupie, who prepared him for Mrs. Hill's class. And that's the concern that parents have. If it's so, if the instruction is done by so many different people, it's almost like there's two men who cook suited to the soup or whatever, it's, they really feel that it could be tarnished, and they really have a concern about that. And the question that they did ask me, of course, I'm fully messenger, but they did ask me to say this, is that would you teach any other subject this way? Would you teach math or science or language arts? We would never teach that, because we would know that a child would not be able to run under those circumstances. And we do feel that art is important. And I just want to say one thing, before the website went down, I actually had an opportunity to see it, and I went on for the art program, because my son never went beyond seventh-grade art. And I went on to see the art program in the high school. And what those kids did over there is amazing. And I am so impressed with that, because I am.
I'm aware of the fact, and we are aware of the fact, that there is a rotating schedule with other programs involved. The parents are not really upset about the rotating schedule, they're just upset about art being in the rotating schedule. That seems to be an area of concern, because the four art teachers that aren't in the schedule are now coming to the children in a six-week period, and the parents feel that it's not, the continuity of the program is being lost at this point. They really don't understand how assessment can be made, how children are going from one art teacher to another, because art teachers are people, and, you know, like any other teacher, they run their, they're running their own way, and they might have their own rules, and they might have their own curriculum. So it's becoming very sporadic in terms of how the children are really learning the art. And certain schools like Radcliffe, they haven't even started their art program, they have another program that they've started. Parents are really upset with this because they really feel that trying to get these children, especially the young kids, the first and second and third graders, to get used to a new art teacher every single time is difficult. Also, in our special ed classes, we have autistic children who, they have a difficult time to finish the people that they know, now they have to get used to all new staff. And it's such a time where people come in, they work with them, and then they're gone. So it's that sense of, like, it doesn't have a sense of feeling that rapport that they need to have. And like I said, there's also a concern in regards to how the sixth-grade art program is being run, because in the way it's always been run, when the teachers were in the buildings, the sixth-grade teacher was responsible for really getting, the sixth-grade art teacher was really responsible in getting that child's portfolio ready, to see whether or not they would be able to go on to Mrs. Hill's class upstairs. I can speak for my son, because he's a junior now across the street, but when he was in seventh grade, he was in Mrs. Hill's class, and he did develop a portfolio. And I have to tell you that he was in Mrs. Hill's class, not so much because of Mrs. Hill, who's a great teacher, but it was really because of Mrs. Troopy, who prepared him for Mrs. Hill's class. And that's the concern that parents have. It's so, the instruction is done by so many different people, it's almost like there's two young cooks suited to the soup or whatever. They really feel that it could be tarnished, and they really have a concern about that. And the question that they did ask me, of course, they'll fill the messenger, but they did ask me to say this, is that, would you teach any other subject this way? Would you teach math, or science, or arts? We would never teach that, because we would know that a child would not be able to run under those circumstances. And they do feel that art is important. And I just want to say one thing, before the website went down, I actually had an opportunity to see it, and I went on for the art program, because my son never went beyond seventh-grade art. And I went on to see the art program in the high school, and what those kids do over there is amazing. And I am so impressed with that, because I am artistically challenged, so I had trouble with drawing stick figures. So for me to, you know, look at what they do, and my concern really is, you know, those are kids who've had art since kindergarten, and they've had the same art teacher since kindergarten, they've had the 36 weeks, you know, they don't have this schedule where they have six weeks a year for, six weeks a year for particular kids, for each art teacher. It's done with one art teacher, and what they do is amazing. And there's a video on that website, if you get a chance to look at that. Now, when we talk about art, we can say that, okay, it's expendable, but really, in the grand scheme of things, it's really not. And the important thing leads into something that I'd like to share with you, and it's the 10 reasons to support the arts. And the second reason I would just share. We talk about true prosperity, improve academic performance, and that's really important. We are all concerned about higher test scores. We are all concerned about getting our kids to be proficient on our NJSS. But the important thing that I think we need to understand, too, is that the arts really, they do develop the skills that children need in order to do better on our tests. I mean, it says here, students with four years of art or music in high school average grow up, they average 100 points better on their SAT scores than students with one half year or less. So I want you to really think about this, because this is, you know, of course, you're fully permitted here, but just think about, you know, the importance of art. I mean, I know it's, to me and to the other parents, it's not expendable, and we just would appreciate if you think about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I'll close this portion of the meeting. Old business. I have one. Came up with the finance committee meeting, the church would like to use the media room, which is on the second floor. Apparently, they're only on the first floor of this building on Sundays. The question is, should we go forward and for the appropriate cost and rent adjustment[1681.52]